I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could I have a motion to, no, first is it a, I have two adjustments, or one adjustment to the agenda. And that's an approval of an out-of-state trip to Vermont for a music conference on December the 2nd. One 9th grader, two seniors, sponsored by and supervised by Erin Smith. And what I'd like to do is move that in front of the presentations, which is item number 6 of the agenda, so that Erin can be with us for a brief period and then move on. Have we got her, Rose?
Yeah, she's on.
Okay, alright, great. So moving on, can I have a motion to approve the minutes of the October 10 meeting?
Some more.
Any questions, adjustments, or revisions that need to be made? A second?
Very good.
Very good.
Very good. No questions? Okay, all those in favor? Thank you very much. Do we have anybody on Zoom or anyone here who wants to make a public comment?
The only folks around Zoom, or Google Meet are Georgia and Erin.
Okay, moving along then. We'll move to that action item with the approval of the Vermont trip on the 2nd of December. Erin?
Erin?
She's surrounded by about 17 teenage kids right now.
Yeah, and she thought...
There she is.
There we go.
Thank you, okay.
Hang on, wait, what? There's too many children here. Say hi, we're all on break. Okay, sorry, thank you. Alright, am I talking now? You want me?
Yes, yeah, you are.
So, this is for the Memphis trip to Vermont that we've done for the past 15 years or so. The high school singers kids participate in a solo and ensemble festival in Vermont. They sing a song that they prepare, and they are given feedback from the judge. It's more in-depth of an audition than Allstate and KB. They get like actual feedback in person from a judge, which is really helpful and useful to them. The fact that I can hear myself on a delay is really messing with my brain. And then if they score high enough, they are chosen to participate in the festival, which is held in March. Last year was the one where Eric was chosen to be the featured soloist for all of the auditions for the entire festival, for the entire people that auditioned. So that was like, that really big deal back then. But this is the festival where we audition and get feedback. We are not spending the night. We are driving down in the morning. I don't know if we have a bus yet, or if I'm driving the white van. Either way, doesn't matter. And we, our auditions are at like 1:30 and 2 o'clock, and we'll come home after. And I think we would just need, Sue, I think is driving with us, so I had put in the proposal that I would need money for reimbursement for Sue, but if she's coming with us, I don't need reimbursement for Sue. She might be wanting to like, drive home really quickly though, because she does have another gig. She plays piano for the University of Farmington Community Chorus, and they might need to have a dress rehearsal that night. And if that's the case, she would need to go down separately, and we would need to reimburse her for mileage, but I put all of that money in the budget, so it should already be there. What else do you need to know? I think that's all I can go. I can't hear you.
Part of it, but it doesn't sound as if you have transportation arrangements made. They're kind of like, maybe the bus, maybe...
I filled out the paperwork, and I have not heard back from Jeff. If there is a person that wants to drive the bus, I think that is what has to happen first. They have to be given the option, and if they want it, then they can take it. And if they don't want it, or they're not available, since it's a Saturday, then I would drive the white van. I think that's how that works, Georgia, yes?
That's correct.
But either way, I mean, it's fine. If a bus driver does drive, then they get paid for spending time on a Saturday, but I don't. But that's okay. I still want to take them.
Any other questions? Can I have a motion to approve the trip? Daniel, second?
Yes.
Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor? It's unanimous. Okay, thank you, Erin.
Thank you, back to dress rehearsal. Don't forget to come to the musical this weekend.
That's right, and happy Thanksgiving.
Yeah, you too, thank you.
Alright, moving on then to presentations. We'll begin with Levi Robinson. He's going to talk to us about the audit, and he's up soon, correct?
Yep, Levi's here. Levi, can you hear us?
I can hear you, can you hear me?
We can, I'm going to mute myself, so you don't hear the feedback.
Okay, that's helpful. Alright, so I'm just going to hit the highlights of the financial statements, and then if you have any questions, we can go from there. So your cash in the general fund increased from 2.08 million to 2.2. That also corresponded with your general fund balance decreasing 57,000, and the main reason for that is transferring some money to those reserves. Otherwise, you'd probably see a similar kind of increase whenever cash does. The fourth thing we always touch on is the school statute, where you're allowed a maximum of 9% of the previous year's budget, which is 5.2 million for you, and your 9% goes down to roughly 469,000. So your unassigned is roughly a little under 900, so you have 421,000 that needs to be used either in the next two years to transfer to reserves, or used for tax relief, to satisfy the statute requirements. Being that you use 300,000 for next year's budget, and you continue, and you've been, you've got more money transferring to the reserves next year, you're going to satisfy that with ease. So, no problems there, it's just something I always mention. And then looking at your, and this is something I talked to you with Georgia and Roxanne about, your school nutrition fund balance is really healthy, to the point that the DOE wants you to cut back on that. So, it's kind of a trend that we've been seeing with all the schools, when they've started giving these increased federal funds. All of them have, if they were in the deficit, they flipped, and they've become very much into positive. So now that the DOE is kind of seeing that impact, they're saying, you know, you've got to spend that, and get it down a little bit at least. So, you're right in line with every, every kind of other financial statement that I've seen with that. So, nothing to be concerned about. If you see, there's a bigger number for sure than there has been in the past. It's very common. See, is there anything else? Obviously, you've been building those reserves, and that's corresponded to where some of that fund balance from the general fund going down. It's living in those capital reserve, and then also in the special revenue, you've got your staff and student one. So you're doing all the right things. I mean, that's pretty much the highlights for me.
Having seen us, thank you Levi. We appreciate you being with us this evening.
Of course.
Of course.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So we'll move on to the next order of business, which is a presentation by Sean Russell.
And Allison Loud.
And, I'm sorry?
And Allison Loud.
And Allison, okay.
Alright. It's a little tricky trying to share the screen. Hopefully this all works. So, we wanted to, there's a few things we want to talk to you about tonight, and I was thinking about potentially doing it in separate board meetings, but we just piled it all together for efficiency. Yeah, you can. Can you flip the slides?
Just as there's the arrow on this thing somewhere.
Oh, yeah. Yes, thank you. I'll give you a nod. Alright, so the agenda, we're going to talk about the ACTIVEM Conference that me, Allison, and Abby went to. And then we're going to move into, talk about new 3D printer we have, and some things we've done so far. And then we did STEAM Night this past Thursday. We're going to talk about that too. Okay, so ACTIVEM, does anyone here know what ACTIVEM is? Educators up here. Well, that's most of this room too. So ACTIVEM is an acronym that stands for the Association of Computer Technology at New York City. So this particular group includes members from across the state, including tech directors, integrators, librarians, classroom teachers, retired educators, it's a large group. When we went to this conference, there were folks from Madawaska, all the way to Kittering, so, and then from Bringsley, and to Elkhorn, so, Four Corners and everywhere else we came. They host many events and workshops for many computer students a year. And one of the big things that prompted me to be part of this group is that they have email listserv, so if there's any tech directors, integrators that are having technical difficulties with equipment in buildings, or questions, it's a really good arena to ask those questions. So like, when state testing goes out, like the WIA testing, or the ADAM testing, they were trying to deploy the software to 100 computers, it's a really good place to ask questions, to think some more. So that's how I got started with this group, and this is the first year we went to the, I, can you go or? It works this time, yeah, yeah. So Rita knows this better than me at this point. One more? So the ACTIVEM Fall Conference, they have one big conference each year, and it's in the fall. And this was the first time that we went to it. So me, Abby, and Allison went there, October 12th and 13th, at the U.S. Civic Center. We all attended sessions throughout the day that were applicable to our roles in RLS. They had sessions all day, both days, and we were able to see them beforehand. So we all met together as a team, and decided which ones we were going to go to that were, you know, best fit, our responsibilities here. Some of the sessions that we went to included Aruba Networking, so our network equipment here at school, like all the access points, switches, things like that. They had a session devoted just for that type of equipment, with other folks who also run that type of stuff, so it was really helpful for me. I went to a incident response plan session, which went over like, if you have a cybersecurity issue, which some schools have been having, or if you like, for instance, one school had a, their fiber line cut by a state, so they had no internet, they were like a beast. So these types of incident response plans are pretty important to have, in terms of what you would do in a scenario like that. So that was really interesting to go to, but also a little scary at the same time. So that's, we're going to be creating one that will work. One of the sessions that Ally went to was hosting STEAM Night, which was hosted by a bigger school than us, Borden. So, you know, we sparked some ideas from theirs. Integrating computer science curriculum, which actually me, Abby, and Allison all went to that session. And we got Yarman that was heading it, and it was really good. It was more so geared for high school students. Learning the merge cubes, and there was a ton of other sessions. We also went to a teen house, too. And then Abby and I also presented at the ACTIVEM Conference, and we got a discount on our fee for going, and we presented on our digital citizenship curriculum. And it was fully attended, and it went really well. It was awesome, we had a lot of really good questions. And some other folks are also doing the same thing, went to our session and included some, some feedback that was helpful for us. So what we gained from going to this, I guess that's probably the most important part, right? So, the sessions, we gained some really good info. I think the Aruba session for me was really good, because we just moved to Aruba Central, so all of our wireless access points are managed through the cloud now. And this was new, started in June, so I'm still kind of getting the hang of how this works, and some other folks have also just recently integrated, so that was really good session for me. And of course, the incident response plan session was really good. And Abby and Allison had some really good feedback from their sessions. The networking was really good too. So we were with some folks from R29 in Farmington. Their whole, well, I don't know if the whole tech team went, but their director and a few other folks went. Both folks in MCD58, their director and their integrator with MCD56 in Dixfield, they went, and R210 went as well. So we were able to network with them, fully attended. And we were able to kind of see how things were going for them, what kinds of things they were up to, big priority type of things. You know, it was really good to hear what other schools were doing. I think sometimes when you're in a range, that you can get a little isolated to what's going on in your silo. It's nice to hear what the other school were up to. And the vendors too. So, at the Civic Center, they're in the middle of the floor. They basically just had a ton of vendors. Actually, Promethean was there, so they had a bunch of new displays. There was a lot of shiny stuff, there was a lot of salespeople, so we did take that with a grain of salt, but it was fun to look at some new shiny stuff, and just play with it, put our hands on it, and then maybe prioritize what would be good to get in students' hands.
Just out of curiosity, I know ACTIVEM is a statewide organization. Is there a regional configuration to that? So you talked about networking in schools in our region, but is there actually officially a regional organization?
So, not with that, so ACTIVEM is just statewide, and there isn't, it isn't broken down at all by like county or region, but WEMIC, Western Maine Educational Consortium, so that acronym is. They just started a, like a tech devoted segment of their consortium. And me and the tech director at Caribec are leading this group that meets monthly.
So you'll have an opportunity to get into the network that is within a regional?
Yeah, and the folks who are part of that right now are the tech director at Telstar, integrator from R29, some tech director there, a few folks from Western Maine, so. So that's good, yeah. It's nice to hear what other people are experiencing, and hear that some people encounter the same issues that Caribec is. So, moving real long, we'll let Ally handle this part, but I did want to say before she gets going that we, I applied for a grant last year for a new 3D printer, and it's actually in the conference room. Those two are in the finance and facilities meeting. Probably saw three of them, but one of them is brand new. And it has a lot more features than the old 3D printers. It has this like hot glass plate. The prints seem to come out a lot better with this printer than they did in the past. It requires less like, going to the printer and seeing this huge mess of plastic, you know? But part of the grant was that we needed to provide the state like a lesson that we did, and then provide them proof that we know the school weren't able to tell them what we did. So Allison and I started this project from last month, maybe? Yeah, and I'll let you, let you take it.
Okay, so what we did is we looked at a class that would be doing something we could easily integrate these with, and we saw the 5th grade's first math unit of the year, which is volume. So we thought that was perfect. So the math skills that we're working on already was converting between measurements, like centimeters, meters, inches, yards, that kind of thing. Starting with using just unit cubes to find the volume of something, and then moving up to the formula from volume. So we tied that in with one of the ISD technology standards, of using technology within the direct process to create an artifact. Erin, what we decided for a project, just coming around to now, as our promptee helpers, is creating a 3D model of their initials, and then finding the volume of that. So what we did first is Sean and I just took a day where we came into the classroom during their math time, and then we had them play around with Tinkercad, which is the program that uses, creates, and they have to print with a 3D printer.
Just for a little background too, so, I don't know if any of you are familiar with the CAD products. Tinkercad is like, probably the most like rudimentary CAD product on the suite. So there's like AutoCAD, and there's a ton more of these CAD products. But Tinkercad is really geared to like, students elementary school, and for 3D printers, so they can like, see a 3D object and put shapes together to build like, put them together to build like one whole shape, you know?
So we played around with that, just so they'd be familiar with the tools themselves. So that would be part of the teaching the day we did the actual project. Then about a week later, we went in, introduced the project to them. What you'll see in a lot of these pictures is we actually started with just centimeter grid paper, so that they could kind of map out a plan of how big their letter would be. The goal was to find the volume in cubic centimeters. But in Tinkercad, the measurements, it was set to, set to millimeters. So there was going to be some conversion happening there. And then they got into Tinkercad itself, and they started designing their letters. They did a really great job with it. For the most part, I think they all got to go that day. They picked it up really well, it was really exciting to see.
We went in like, a week before and like, built a house with them. Which was a pretty, it sounds like it might be hard, it was a pretty easy, actually quite simple. We built like a, just like a cube, and then placed like this roof on top of it, to make sure it was centered. So they had an idea as to like, how to print shapes out on a plane, and how to manipulate them, and how to group them together to make one shape out of two.
And it's harder than it sounds, because when you're looking at it from one like perspective, you can turn the screen around, and things you thought were like on top of each other, like totally off.
Yeah, totally. So you have to like, manipulate the screen to see the shape from all angles, to make sure things are lined up, or else, you know, it might not be.
And then we started printing them. And you guys can kind of see the products there.
That was the longest process, like each one of, like, the letters would print out as two, but like, two letters would take like two hours.
Really?
Yeah.
So what are, what's the anticipation of future projects?
So, last year, Kelsey has done this project every year in middle school social studies, where the students have to like, create an artifact that they find in a pen and paper. So, that's been a pretty big hit, and that's a pretty arduous one, because each kid will create some artifact, like, it could be like a poster, and it's found in the middle, and they'll tell a story about it. So that was a pretty popular one. Actually, Rose used it for... Yeah, for 3D shapes and for volume as well.
Yeah, volume and surface area.
Yeah.
I also have a project I'm doing with online middle school critical thinkers groups, where they have to design a stand or a holder of some kind, for like, hold multiple types of devices. So here, right now they're in the research phase of that, moving up to 3D out there. And then they're going to design their own in Tinkercad.
I know these have incredible potential. During COVID, people were using these 3D printers to make component parts for breathing machines, to help hospitals that didn't have enough.
Actually, that camera fell one time, and the bottom part broke, and I couldn't get the part online, so I printed, there's this like repository called Iniverse. And there's a ton of files on there, so I found the file where that camera printed. Actually, Rose, you just printed this. Or did you print that?
Somehow, yeah.
You did, okay.
The little roll part of my tape dispenser disappeared, so I've been like, just giving tape and holding it. I said, "Alex, give me a review."
And actually, all of our, you know the Rs that Lynn finds uses for paper? Those are all printed.
And it's also something in churches with their Rs, is an experience where they get to design and print something.
3D experience. Any questions about 3D printers? We did have them out during the open house a little bit, I think I printed them.
Yeah, I was going to say, I got a demonstration when I was down the hallway during...
Yeah, it was printing at like...
These, there's like some printers that are huge. Emaian has the largest 3D printer on the planet. And they built a legitimate house, like a house. So these are, you know, just kind of scratching the surface, but the kids love that.
Yeah.
So, yeah, it's good. STEAM Night? So last Thursday, we held our first STEAM Night. So we also have some other tools that the state provided us as well, that we were required to use a bit. And actually, Allison and I last year, which was in the 2nd grade, used these kits quite a bit with her class. So they are a Lego robotics kit from Spike Essentials. Basically, there's like, all these different activities you can do, where you build something, and then you program what you build. It will appear in this thing. You program what you build with an iPad, and you can use it around. Or manipulate it, and you can make like a bowling game, or you can make a car, or you can do a whole bunch of things. I'm still doing that trick, so, we'll get out there.
So we, we figured the easiest thing for a STEAM Night would be, have started these, because some of the students are more familiar with that. We had 16 kids, so we ended up delivering it to 16 students signing up. And we just had set a date, we invited families. They, I think just slots filled in within a couple of hours, which we were not expecting, but was really exciting to see that a lot of people were really interested in it. So they liked it.
Different participation.
Yeah, so the challenge we gave them, the Lego kits come with their own set of optional builds, and like a little lesson or activity that goes with it. So they call it Taxi Taxi. Essentially, they had to build a car. And what we did is we actually printed some maps, which you could see right here, the top of, I don't know what it's all about.
Large format printer, so we got a printer a couple of years ago through a brand, that prints 44 inches wide, and we printed the maps with the printer. They look good.
Yeah, they looked great. And then my 3rd, 35, critical thinkers were made two separate maps also. They wanted to do like a forest scene, and then one was another town. So basically, once they got through the initial builds, and it gives a kind of a starting code to do, so they practice how they go forward in turn. And then we just kind of let them go with it. So they kind of traveled around to the different maps. And they had a lot of fun with it. It was, it was hard to tell everybody when it's time to do that.
Yeah, we went over a little bit. One of the maps was really funny. So one of the students that Ally had created this map, and like, it had L of Cody's on the map. Like an arrow. It was, it was, it was hilarious. Like her son, like, being this like berry patch, and one side of the patch is poisonous, and the other side was like good to eat. But it was, it was fun.
Yeah, creative.
Yeah, and they also got creative with the builds too. Like the car was like cookie cutter, you know, like once it finished, it all looked the same, but they added like different components to the car, and it looked, to decorate it or, to, you know, make it theirs. Couple of them had some really fun.
And we do plan to do some more this year. We'd like to do one with 2D, and middle school, and probably another one for this April. Seems to be a lot of interest to that.
Yeah, just like Ally said, it's built up over the past. There, so there's a different type of kit too. So these ones are called Spike Essentials. And last year, yeah, it was last year, the state provided each school these mobile labs, and they had three choices. One was the Lego kits, one was like these merge cubes, and another one was the Spirobox. I chose the Legos, because it seems like our population's kids love Legos, so. Yeah. And you got one lab per 100 students, because we didn't have 200, we only got one lab. Which was, I think we got 16, so that was good. But yeah, so we introduced these now. They also made another type of kit called Spike Primes. And Ally and I are competing, there's another grant out there that we might apply for, to get a couple of these Spike Primes each. How they work, because they're more geared for middle school students versus...
Come and answer questions.
Thank you, thanks, Seth.
Okay, and one last presentation by the lady.
Well...
I'm a lady.
I'm a lady.
Yeah, I asked Georgia, I think last spring, I should tell you guys, and it's, um, it's been, but, just talked to guys about what I've been doing with the lady, and what we've been focused on, because I thought you guys might be interested in that. That's true. I did want to let you know that, I know most of you weren't involved with me stepping away from my position, but I, just as of the last couple of weeks, I just wanted to let you know that my husband is in great health, and cancer is free at the moment. Yeah, it was pretty exciting. Pretty excited for sure. Pretty excited for sure. And it's crazy what Addison can do as far as he has, believe it or not, a ladder made out of other, other body parts. But it's pretty amazing. So anyways, I just wanted to update you about what we're doing and what we, how we started last year. The major focus was getting Delaney feed and with what a school counselor does. Obviously, with her master's degree in social work, she definitely had a great background to do the job. But it's, you know, the nuts and bolts of being a school counselor, she certainly was not directly, you know, knowledgeable about that. So we started off talking about the American School Counselors Association and their model. And that is something that we try to follow and we worked hard to do that. And basically, it is just a way to assess and deliver and define and manage the program that we offer to our students. It kind of really is focused on indirect and direct services. Trying to keep it moving to the next slide. And we tried to break down the best we could. Obviously, direct services are services that, you know, you're in the classroom, you're teaching career education, you're talking about scholarships, you're, you may have worked on a, you know, a career education unit. And indirect services are the things that you do to try to make all those things happen. And so they're very closely connected because your indirect services usually end up being your direct service. The work you do indirectly, meaning not working directly with students either as a group or, you know, as a class or group or individually. So, you know, the big thing that I, if I can stress to you guys is the difficulty in one person providing those services pre-K through twelve. You know, if you had two hundred kids, students that were of one age group, either, you know, pre-K five or middle school or high school, it would be much easier. But it, just because of the needs, all of those, the age group, they need different things. So that was the majority of our focus last year. And obviously, Delaney has, is awesome, is great. But it, it is a huge task. And especially now, I think, with the needs of our students. And, you know, we're no different than, you know, schools across the country with the needs that students come to school with every day. So, and obviously, we want to stay focused. We want to support students emotionally and socially. But we want to really stay focused on delivering career education. Because an area that we feel really strongly about is, you know, getting our kids engaged in their own education. Because obviously, you know, simply to you guys, when kids are engaged in their own education, you know, they're learning, they're excited about school, there's less discipline problems. You know, it's, it's awesome. So something that I had been working on and really wanted to make sure that work continued with Delaney was finding research-based ways to deliver career education and get kids pumped up about their future. And what they may do as a career, even if they change their mind ten times, we wanted to get them excited about that.
Heidi, what's your assessment and how have you coordinated services? Given, you know, no matter where you turn, New York Times to Family Circle, you know, you read about the impact on the overall mental health of kids in schools predicated on COVID and isolation. How do those services get coordinated so that you can continue to focus on career education?
Right. Because you can't do anything really if kids aren't ready to learn. And when kids are in an emotional place that are struggling with anxiety and depression, like, you know, the learning isn't going to happen. So we have, we have, we have a couple of different programs that we work, that we provide, that we directly as a school counselors, her and I, Holly Hagan, Lindsay Savage, and Linda Feins. And we work through a curriculum that's called Second Step. And, and what we really want with that is just to have discussions with kids. Because when you make connections through discussions about different topics, kids feel like teachers care and that they have someone to go to if they need to, to talk about a problem or issue. And we're obviously, thanks to you guys and the support that you gave to us hiring Rowan. I mean, I just can't even tell you, I mean, that's.
Heavy, isn't it?
Huge, huge to have, having been the last twenty years trying to have those services available to our students and doing it, I don't know how many different ways. This really is obviously best practice is to have someone right here in the house. And we are so fortunate to, you know, not only have you guys support that position, but to be able to find them and put them both of them here. So that was huge. But to get back to career education, we want to get kids pumped up about their futures because we just know, research shows that that's the best scenario or can be provide that. So we kind of just stayed, as, you know, it's kind of different for me now. I come in and I work with Delaney and sometimes we're in the classroom, sometimes it's just her and I are meeting. We're discussing what, you know, what we're going to do, where our goals are for this month or the next month. And, but it allows me a lot of time to think. And I kind of, you know, it took me a couple of months to figure out, why, why didn't I have this time to think about and strategize and problem solve some of these things? When I was there, sixty hours a week. And obviously, it took me that long to figure out, well, you're not there, so it's sixty hours a week now. So it just allowed me more time to really think big picture and how we could best really get kids engaged and pumped up. And as the year went last year, I was actually able to like flush out and research some of the information that I get in my email with before in the past. My inbox was just always blowing up and I did the best I could. But we were working hard to, to do what we had for our, you know, for programming. And so two things came to us and one of them was directly through the DOE. I think, I think that's my next slide, isn't it?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. And this program is called BAR. And I don't know if Georgia and Seth have talked to you guys a little bit about it? It sounds like they have. And it's going to be assets reducing risk. And the DOE is paying for this for schools who want to do it. And basically, it was started by a school counselor twenty years ago who was a little frustrated with the outcomes in her school as far as kids not finishing school, not working up to their potential. And she took a sabbatical and developed this program. It's like I said, twenty years old, it's being used all over the country. And the state of Maine is getting behind it. So we were like, okay, what is this going to mean? How can we river this without putting more on our teachers that are already very busy delivering their curriculum? And so after a lot of conversations and phone calls and talking to other schools that have already used it, you know, Seth was a huge part of saying, yes, you know, we can do this. Let's start small, which was, you know, genius in my reflection now. And basically, what they're, they're focusing on is building through this curriculum, building better relationships with their students in your classrooms using data that we mostly already collect, but doing it in a way and structuring meetings that is much more efficient. So we had a two-day training this summer where our middle school, myself, Delaney, Rowan, Seth, all, Lindsay, all took part in. And I'm going to be honest with you guys. It was the best training I've ever been a part of in my twenty-five years. It was outstanding. We had two people come, where are they from? Like Chicago? Yeah, I think so. And they were, they were teachers, but they used BAR in their school. And now they also work for BAR. And so they were trainers. They were, it was outstanding, two days, awesome. So we were pretty pumped up. And so we got our middle school staff on board and, and that's what we're doing. So we're, we have curriculum to engage students. They're called I-times and meet times. And we're using the I-times in the, in the middle school. And, but our meeting structure to discuss students, all students, not just students who may be struggling. Like this program is for every student. And so we're using it right now just for the sixth grade and we hope to grow that. And what it does is it allows you to focus on students' strengths and building those connections with teachers and turning attitudes around for students who may be struggling. But also to let, to really be focused for all students, the data and information that we collect as far as their testing, their weekly grades, all of that is on a spreadsheet. So these meetings, instead of sometimes, ladies would know, sometimes you go to a meeting and it's two hours long and you come out of that meeting and you're like, hey, we did a lot of talking, but what are, what is our action? What are we doing? And that, this meeting, how they run their meetings, it's all action-oriented. And everybody in the meeting has a role and has a responsibility to, to like run the meeting efficiently. So it's really, I think, dynamic. And it's certainly a change from what we have done, which was a big part of why, you know, we were pumped up. It's because change is good, or it certainly can be. And you want to be doing new things and bringing new things to not only our students, but to our teachers that will be more effective. And that's what we really felt that this offered. So you can hit that next slide with things. And this is just some of the things that BAR over the last twenty years has researched, you know, they have collected that they're more, how they're impacting kids, decreased behavior issues is just one. Increased attendance, which is huge as far as students progressing academically. That's just two of the things. You can, you know, Google BAR, you can get, they have a website. It's, it's tons of information. I could talk all night, but I ask Seth that, but we get too hyped up about this. But Delaney and I will be happy to come back and talk more about it if you guys have questions. But we are pretty excited. Oh, the best part, okay, sorry, Seth. We, why this is so awesome, you guys, is because this platform is providing support to our school. So every single week, Delaney and I meet with a coach who's helping us, okay? And strategizing and giving us, you know, just things that we, might take us a long time to figure out, but she's got so much experience. The other thing we do is every month, we have a PLC meeting with others, educators from all over the country that are using BAR. And some of them are brand new like us. Some of them have been doing it for ten or twenty years. So we just started last month and it was unbelievable. I was so pumped up after that meeting. So I just feel like, I know anybody who has worked in education who often get, you know, oh, we're going to do this this year. And then you go to a one-day training and then you go back and.
It happens.
Yes. I really don't like that. So that's why I was so excited about this because I felt like it had the follow-through and the support to really make this a reality for our school.
Heidi, realistically, that's ninety-eight percent of both of, of school-based professional development. So the fact that you're following through with this and still have this level of support and enthusiasm is just terrific.
It is so awesome. Rachel, our coach, came last two weeks ago, Seth, and spent the day with us. And she'll be here four times this year.
That's true.
Oh, my gosh, she just, I mean, I know it's her job to like get us pumped up, but she was really excited. She loved her school and, you know, hopefully, maybe somehow you guys will be able to meet her. And she, yeah, she's amazing. So we feel super lucky about that. The last thing I'm going to say is I knew I was reading.
Just to be clear, you told me to give you the hug.
I know, I know. I just, I, I am just going to go to this next slide.
Next slide?
Yes, please. This is something that I will come back and talk to you guys about another time. It's the other focus. So BAR, last year, you know, with Delaney, it was just like, all hands on deck. Let's learn, you know, let me help you as much as I can to learn this job and the responsibilities of the job. And this year, we have these two initiatives, BAR and e-dynamic learning. That, that is what I'm focusing on. Obviously, I still support her with any questions, concerns, problems, planning, goal setting. But these two programs are where I'm spending my time. And this program is our curriculum for career education. So it offers a lot of other things. Both Sean and Ally are using it for enrichment in middle school. And we're using it for six through twelve for career education. And Lindsay Richards is using it for life skills as well. But I'm going to cut myself off.
Thank you, Heidi. I appreciate it.
The energy is awesome.
Any questions or comments, guys? Thank you so much. Okay, moving on then to Chair Report. Georgia.
Hi, everybody. I don't have, I don't have a ton tonight to talk about, but I do want to mention the Veterans Luncheon that was held yesterday, yesterday was a huge success. We had about eighteen veterans show up. And it, it, I think I would like to keep this an annual event and hopefully, it's just going to continue to grow. I would also like to thank a gentleman named Greg Whalen who reached out. He is a former vet and he reached out and just wanted to help, help get the word out about this event. And came in, picked up some flyers and actually like hit the pavement, went door to door, knocking on people. Like, it was awesome. And so he, he was super helpful. So a big thank you to him. I also want to thank Ally Loud and Sean Russell for the Steam Family Night. I did go there for a short period of time to start. And it was amazing to see what these kids were doing. My, my mind was blown. Everybody was having such a good time. And yeah, it was a full house. And I think if she does have more, it will continue to be a full house. It, it was just, it was just super exciting. I can't say enough about it. I can't say enough about it. And, and then I guess the last thing I'd like to say is, and I think you all know this, but I'll be flying out in the morning to go to the National Forum to advance rural, rural education. I'm super excited about that. I'll be there till Friday. I will, I am going with another superintendent, Deb Alden, who is the superintendent in Runford and also Jeff Laurachal's aunt, I must say. But I'm looking very forward to that and we'll come back and let you all know what I took away from that. And that's all I got for tonight.
Georgia, and safe travels to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I really have nothing to share with you this evening other than to wish each and all of you and your families a very happy Thanksgiving holiday because we will not be together between now and our next meeting. And Bob Green and Deb have graciously agreed to share some information that they gleaned from the MSMA conference. They were quite impressed with some of the sessions that they attended. And so I wanted to give them some airtime tonight.
Everything that Heidi and Sean talked about related to content and data selection, assembly, organizing it, analyzing it, and then creating an output from it is probably going to be completely different three to five years from now than the methodologies you just related to us. And if that doesn't pique your interest, I don't know what will. This gentleman who was the keynote speaker, Dr. Bill Daggett at the MSMA Conference down in Augusta, spent a significant amount of time. I'm not going to suggest he was raising alarms, but what he was telling us had some impact. Allow me to just read the description of his presentation. Today's students need to be prepared for their future. Living in a rapidly evolving global economy, students need to be able to think at higher levels, employ strong literacy and analytical skills, and solve problems in unpredictable situations. There is currently a gap between what students need and what our schools provide. To be prepared for success in today's technology-focused and information-based society, all students need a rigorous and relevant learning experience. The overall message I think that we got for this was there are a lot of things happening right now that we really need to think about and try to stay ahead of it. The first thought provoking thing he related to us was that he suggested, he, he talked a little bit about the COVID disruption period. He suggested that a second grader is the new kindergartner. I'm sure he was referring to intellectual and emotional development. I'm not sure what percentage of each. It probably is recognizably and situationally variable. But the question that Gavin and I had when he mentioned this was, does that mean that the sophomore is the new seventh grader or the senior is the new 10th grader? These are questions that we can't answer. The teachers can answer that much better than we can. But I think it's, there are, there are two messages to get from that. The first message is that we need to be aware. And the second message is that we need to be thinking about, if this situation actually does exist, and I saw a few heads nod out there, then we need to start to figure out how, if at all possible, we're going to try to catch up and try to erase the disruptive times and kind of get back on track, if you will. So on a more positive note, this was passed out as well. You have a copy of it here. And the only reason I bring this up is because it actually very much resembles something that we have here at the Ranji School, which we were really happy about because it's always nice when you are affirmed in kind of what you're doing. He spent a lot of time talking about artificial intelligence. And that actually is what I was going to refer to is what would change the way you get, and we all get to where we are going to get to in whatever our projects are in the future. If anybody wants one of these, I've got a couple of extras. So I went on an art, my artificial intelligence assistant. Anybody who's interested in those please take one of those, they're all extras. And I asked my, I'm the, I'm the instructor development supervisor for outdoor emergency care and ski patrol of the entire state of Maine. So I do a lot of lesson planning and supervising that type of education. So what I did was I went on my new artificial helper and I typed in, create a 10 minute lesson plan for emergency treatment with leading hand. Now, how long do you think this would take me if I had to do it myself and do the research, collect the data, analyze the data, and then spit out the lesson plan? Took three seconds for the AI to spit out this actually very well-written lesson plan. Now, the important thing about the AI and asking it to do things is you should be very specific, as specific as possible about what you wanted to do and how you wanted to do it. So I wanted to see if this was too simple for the AI and how fast it was going. So I figured I'd try something that we might find here in the Ranji Regional School System. So I asked it to create a 40 minute lesson plan for third graders. I love to give this to Bridget. To learn about poetry. That took 4.2 seconds. And I've got this four page, what is really quite an interesting, and I think it's pretty well done, lesson plan for poetry. I'm happy about what Dr. Daggett said because he told us we're all going to get our weekends back. We should be really happy about that. This, this is definitely a good news, bad news, and a weird news presentation. The new brain, it's not the technology as much as the impact on the behaviors. Impact of technology on human behavior. David, I mean, sorry, Bill suggested that engagement and societal activity among students has decreased by 30 to 50%. The human interaction factor. Engagement is decreased. Dealing with technology, as I said, we've got to try to stay ahead of this. Should be the future focus. And what is our policy here at Ranji, Ranji School? Do we have one? What's our apology, policy, I'm sorry, on technology? We should be thinking about that. And he suggested that we want to integrate the best.
Yeah, and I think Sean has done a key leadership role around that issue. You have a technology committee, you talk about policy implications, you talk about.
One of the things that is really important for us to think about though is a policy related to artificial intelligence. Because we really don't have one that specifically talks about AI at this point in time. We have like an acceptable use policy and rules regarding devices and things of that nature and also plagiarism, but nothing specifically about AI. And a lot of schools don't either, but it's something that we're, like this group that I'm in in West Remaine.
So we're going to, we're going to talk about that.
That's a point about what you do with your, what you do with your equipment, what you can and can't do, but not in terms of really futuristic thinking about, you know, the impact of AI and all of that.
But it's, it's great. And we are, by just having you here, we're already a little bit ahead of things, but it's a very fast incoming blip on the radar. In case you haven't noticed, the ownership of artificial intelligence is huge competition right now going between every tech giant out there. They're at each other's throats to try to, try to get whatever revenue and market share that this is going to bring. Artificial intelligence gets its base data from the internet. As such, oh, everything on the internet is 100% right and true though, right? So there will be a need for artificial intelligence editors. This is going to be a new opportunity, a whole new job market for this. And as I mentioned before, when you're asking your artificial intelligence assistant to do some work for you, it's very specific. Or I remember when I was in my first data processing class back in 1970, garbage in, garbage out, still true today. All right? So for schools, artificial intelligence will help with class projects like the ones that you presented to us this evening. Lesson plans, bus schedules. The app that I use is ChatGPT. If you have, it's free, go on the internet, play with it. It's amazing. It takes seconds to generate requests.
So that was a lesson plan tool that you used to create these new.
I didn't even have to, I didn't even have to go to and say, where are the lesson plans? I just typed in, create a lesson.
It's not just for education, it's like, it's much more broad.
Yeah, yeah. It's for anything at all.
And they had a question, Bob, did you hear it? Did you say I typed in, typed in what?
It's a website. So it's web based.
It's an artificial intelligence website. It's called ChatGTP. So go on Google, search ChatGPT, create an account, and just have fun. Have fun with it. So anything regarding evaluation, testing, questions from artificial intelligence, they all need to be examined for content and validity as far as how the school will use this, going back to the garbage in, garbage out theory. So the unintended consequences of AI used in schools would be that, well, if I ask the students to go create a report for me, a Spanish class report on my trip to Puerto Rico, okay, they're going to type, type it in. And Kate's not going to know whether they actually did the work or they went on and had AI do the work. So Dr. Daggett suggested that there be some. Well, you know what I mean.
We've had a couple of cases where we've suspected and.
Too good to be true.
So what Dr. Daggett suggested had to do more with how the examination and evaluation process would be morphing and it would be more verbal rather than written, which is going to be a very big change in the way business is done in all schools everywhere. And to Kathy's point, ask artificial intelligence about concepts related to areas of interest. There will be a mixed reaction to this AI wave from teachers. I've already talked to a couple of people about this and I've already experienced a little bit of this. It's very interesting. We need to prepare students for the artificial intelligence future. Computer coding jobs will be gone. That's, think about that. I mean, except if you're programming and coding for artificial intelligence. So.
It always, we had a workshop last year, I don't, I don't want to interrupt, with the Ru Institute when students went to it. And they tried to avoid the scary part of AI, but one of the things they stress is that AI always needs input for it to work.
It does, thus the content managers for AI and the people who are going to manage the AI managers. Until AI has consciousness, which I hope it never does, then it's always going to be a need to manage the input content and how, and how it works. So Dr. Daggett suggested there's going to be a bit of a shift from content back to skills. Skills that artificial intelligence does not have cannot change faster than the rate of readiness and trust and if you will, acceptance. So if you don't accept it, let's say here in Ranji, we don't accept it or accept it slowly. But let's say down in the Scarborough School District, they accept it readily and embrace it. This is going to be very interesting if this happens because it's going to change the way business is done. There's going to be the unintended consequences or situational opportunity for less consistency throughout the entire educational system unless somebody keeps an eye on this and keeps a handle on. And these are just some things, this, and these are just questions that were triggered by this presentation. Deb and I just kept passing notes to each other and this one, what about this? What about this? So impact, as far as the workplace is concerned, 7% of all jobs will be eliminated. As I suggested previously, there will be some new jobs in terms of AI management and coding in that area, as Sean pointed out. 67% of workers will have half their workload impacted. I hope that, that's relative to that we're going to get our weekends back. And 30% will experience minor impact. Those that do physical labor and human touch or human interaction. I would respectfully suggest that in our arena of education in schools and classrooms and kids, that we'll never lose that human interaction piece, which is critical to emotional intelligence development. So he basically put this list up. And I already know of one law firm that's basically let about 20% of their staff go already due to artificial intelligence's ability to do research on cases. If I want to find out about a guy who was swimming mountains somewhere because they crashed into a live tower, I can get all those cases in like 10 seconds from AI. I don't have to go get a paralegal to weed through boxes of documents, redact them, and give them to me. Data trader, data managers, traders, insurance agents, graphic designers, accountants, bookkeepers, customer service agents, web designers, paralegals. It just goes on and on. It just goes on. So the bottom line here, thank you for your patience. I didn't mean to go this long, but the bottom line here, as I said, AI is a fast incoming blip on the radar. And anybody who's been successful in any endeavor and those have been really successful know that their mantra is be there before it happens. So we should think about with AI, how, how we can be there before it happens and keep an open mind. And again, as Dr. Bill suggested, technology policy, incorporate the best. And respectfully suggesting we need to be thinking about this and move it in this direction sooner rather than later.
Thank you, Bob.
Yeah, that probably is another, I mean, I actually went to see different seminars.
Well, I did. I did attend eight different sessions and I'll just be very brief. I did, I did three sessions from Drummond and Woodson just because they're up on what's current and new. I attended one with investigations regarding discrimination and harassment. And the bottom line is make sure your policies are up to date. You really have a good handle on that. Another one was on school boards, transparency and communication. And the big takeaway I got from that is the general public does not understand what you can share and what you cannot. And, and how to educate that, they don't really have any answers. They had a lot of good banter back and forth between Buffalo Bills fan and New York Patriots fan, and that was really how they got their point across. But it's just, it's very limited what we can share. And the general public just doesn't understand. If you read any school's Facebook feed, you see comments just inundated with stupidity, really what it is, and they just, they just don't get it. And they don't really have an answer for that. And the third one I attended was on main restraint and seclusion rules. And that really has a huge impact on anybody who works with children. I just want to read you that this is the new main law that defines the contact you can have with students only, and that's a big only, when there is an imminent risk of physical injury to that student or to others and only if less restrictive interventions are deemed ineffective. And who decides that? The attorney who did this is actually a childhood friend of mine and he is just baffled by the phrase imminent. And it's just basically it's, it's hands off for all of, all of you, us, who work with children. And then I attended, three other sessions I attended, which I won't go into because I'll share with the wellness committee things that school districts are doing regarding wellness for all employees, students, and the greater community. Those were good. And I only won one prize this year. This year I won an L O B gift card, so only one this year.
Too long.
How much?
$50. That won't buy much in L O B. Thank you for your time.
Well, thank you for sharing. You really, really appreciate that. I feel like we at least were partially there with you guys with respect to this.
They did have a great lunch.
How close, close to the learner?
Yeah.
The work that you guys did was great, so. Okay, um, so.
I'll keep it brief. I just want to piggyback. So, Bob, um, just so the board knows, um, we are on top of this. I guess Chat G P T really like everyone was talking about it last March, February, March, all of a sudden, everyone's like talking about it. Sean and Pete St. John gave a workshop on it, and um I lost that.
Multi-districts, yeah.
Um, so we are considering it. We have a leadership team. It's a top of the discussion of how kids are using it, and I will tell you, Bob, you can tell when a kid uses Chat G P T. Um, it's kind of funny. But no, a lot of thoughts being put into it. Actually, with the why, I didn't come to finance because I was downstairs at a workshop that Abby put on about A I, um, the A B C's of A I, all about A I, the benefits and the concerns. There are definitely concerns. Chat G P T, I just discovered, is about one of a hundred things you can use. It was amazing. Uh, one interesting thing the guy did was um he had a class and they argued with Chat G P. I think they used Chat G P T about is it gif or jif? And you had to argue your stance, and then Chat G P T would come back and they'd formulate another argument. So that's a way to use A I in the classroom. Um, he took a YouTube video of himself giving a talk in English and just typed in, I need to do this in Spanish. It did it in Spanish. It even made his mouth, it put new lips on that looked like his. Um, so we are on top of this. Um, we, in this, in this workshop, uh in the paperwork, the documents that we got, there are some examples of policy around A I, which is really important, and Mary and my mom is actually really asking about this. We are looking at alternative assessments already. So I feel like we're doing a good job. Um, I mean, when we went to that workshop at fifty-eight, our staff, we were the ones giving the workshop to other teachers that had a lot of questions. So we are trying to stay on top of it. It's forever changing. I think it's like we say now, A I needs somebody, A I is gonna develop A I. It's, that's what's gonna happen, and it's, it is what it is. We're gonna have to learn to live with that, learn how to use it, and how does it fit with what we do. I know colleagues that use Chat G P T to write routine emails. I could type in, I need an email to high school students about um scheduling process. It'd have to be a little bit more specific, but in about, yeah, ten seconds, it would come up, and the email would almost be good enough to send. So a lot of people are using um that, but we are on top of it. Um, we're doing our work. Um, Abby and Sean do a good job.
I forgot to mention that Abby wasn't presenting with me tonight because she was doing an A I workshop in the library.
Yeah. And one thing too, I wanna say, the gentleman about the COVID with the kindergarten, second grade and kindergarten, um, there is a lag. It was interesting. It took a while to see in a lot of the national data, but really, um, we had did a good study, and it's about four and a half to five months, they figure. I don't know if it's two years. But um, four and a half to five months, and we see that in our data. And you know, the interesting thing is from the beginning, everyone keeps saying this like catch up, catch up. Really, I think the mistake we made was that idea of catch up. It almost should have been this pause and accept where we are, and then over time, you know, but that idea of catch up, it's hard to do because we lost something. Um, but it is, we just had a really good workshop today looking at some data, and because we're moving into a lot of curriculum work, and it's how, you know, how do we start filling these gaps? Where are we at um as we do our benchmark standards? So just a lot of this is in our conversation, but um the A I stuff is, it's gonna be interesting. Um, it's gonna change assessment, but it's a powerful, powerful tool for educators to take some workload off.
And you know, so to your point about we're not, we clearly are experiencing the lag, but not the lag, but I think those stat, those statistics are really urban schools where they had huge percentages of kids who did not show up for class, did not show up on line, any of those things, and we instituted policies a year ago, two years ago, so that our kids could be in this building a majority of the time, and I think one of the big differences that made in the sense that we do a boost them exclusively to only our own.
And no, we did a good job of that. And one other point about what the data shows, especially with us, is that that like grades, third, fourth to seventh, fourth to eighth, when you're talking about is the tenth grader, the new seventh grader, that the high school seems like tracking well with historic data, like they dealt better with the disruption. Um, so but just so you like, well, because when we first heard about Chat G P T last, well, I didn't, I know it was like the buzz. We're all like, this is the end of the world. Like, what are we gonna do? So we've been like, it's been marinating.
Yeah, right.
It's been marinating with us for a long time, and then at some point, you can't, like you said, you can't fight it, and is it a tool that we need to use? Like, really, at some point, is me sitting here typing an email even something I should be doing, when I can't type in, I need an email to a parent about scheduling a meeting for next Tuesday at one thirty, and just type that in, and all of a sudden, there it is. And like, why would I spend my time doing what something can do for me? And I think that's where this is going.
We're gonna have a shift. Yeah, and you know, one of, one of the things I often sometimes think of to, to provide people a little bit of positive note is that in our pockets, we can Google a YouTube, or YouTube a video to fix a dishwasher immediately, and the dishwasher guys haven't lost any ground in terms of, you know, their jobs, so.
Spell check. We've been using A I for a long time. Spell check.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Um, but Alexa, I mean, it's gonna be a different game, but.
It's, it's interesting, though. Sean, here, Joe, I got, um, somebody asked me last year to write, I had three articles, and they're like, yeah, I'll do that for like canoeing in the region, kayak in the region. I don't even know where they ended up, so Sean has, Sean, I do not have time to do this. Let's Chat G P T it. So I did it, and they were amazing, but the problem is, well, the only problem is one, they said the lake flowed gently down, like the lake doesn't flow. But um, there was no life in it, and then I tried to like fix it, and then once I put my voice into it, it was like garbage, so I just threw all three of them and scratched myself. But I typed in, I need an article about kayak in the Range Lakes region. I timed it. It was twenty seconds, and I think I had a thousand. It was way too long, but.
Yeah, it showed up in Down East Magazine last week.
No, tell me you're kidding. I don't know where they went. I sent it to a man. Sent it to somebody, and I don't know what they got published.
Everything that you just stated is an infomercial for policy surrounding A I, and while it's gonna be great, is, it's just like freedom. It, it, there's a responsibility that surrounds it.
It's associated, yeah.
Yeah.
Good point.
This is no different. I don't know. I think it's really exciting.
No, it is, Bob. And there's one thing I just learned, the information is April twenty twenty-three. That they just, the last update that A I is running on.
Oh, yeah.
Chat G P T, they have not allowed it, Sean, correct if I say this wrong, to openly search the current internet.
They, they haven't.
They train it on a certain point, I think, so they can vet it. When they allow it to go out and not have to go off the database will be when it gets.
It's not open to the like wild internet. So like last year, Chat G P T three was only up to like twenty twenty-one, so if you had asked it um like about this war or or any like Ukraine back in, back then, it would have no idea, you know? Um, and Chat G P T three hallucinated, that's what you call it, when like it, it just says like the lake is falling, you know? Much more than Chat G P T four, which is out now. It's making much better.
Yeah, three point five you don't. But in the four, you get the image generator.
So like even with Canva, uh which is a program to create graphics, or you can do Facebook covers, or any kind of logos, anything like that. Um, so it's even in the graphic world too, like, so you could type in, I need a still life of a cat wearing a pearl necklace, like, and it literally gives you the image, so that's something with like, we teach graphics here, so like, but I think the benefit to us is being a small school and knowing our students, like, you know when that voice doesn't sound right. You know that the skill, the, you know, the student hasn't learned past tense in Spanish, so like, well, I don't know why they're writing that. So and I, you know, I think that we are at a benefit versus other, other.
And one of the big things that comes up with it, last thing I'm gonna say, um, for concern with education in the freshman world is a bias, a biased piece in it, and um a non-American, non-Caucasian person put their profile picture in there and said, I just want a more professional profile picture, and it generated a white lady with blue eyes. Um, so that there's real concern about bias. It's like um in there, so you gotta be careful with it when you ask.
The information that it's fed is what it generates, and if there's more information about, you know, the folks who created it.
Um, anyways, onwards. So I talked, we're diving into a lot of curriculum work. Um, our Tuesday time today, we whole group data work. We're gonna look at E L A um benchmarks, standards through December. Um, we have our first assembly tomorrow at ten.
Thursday.
Thursday, oh God, it seems like Wednesday. Thursday at ten, um, then right, we'll, we'll change with the rotary before we have the assembly, and then our golden tickets, Hall of Fame, Student Month, we've changed the name. Now it's Hall of Fame. The lunch used to be a couple weeks later. Now, right after the assembly, we're going to lunch, so that'll be fun. Um, they wanted to be more connected to the moment. Here, teacher conferences are going on. Um, we had our middle school go to the Mayan conference, Main Youth Integrated, Main Youth Integrated Leadership Network Conference, right?
I think you got it.
They got back at five. Um, Kate saved the return from D C, and I heard great things from my daughter about that trip. Um, yeah, what did I get?
Thank you, Seth. Appreciate that. So I, I think it was the D C trip. I thought it was really fun, so I can talk a little bit about that. Um, some of the places we went to was the Washington Monument, the Lincoln Memorial, museums, we went to the um natural, there was options for the Natural History Museum, the Air and Space Museum, I think, and the Holocaust Museum. Personally, I went to the Holocaust Museum with a couple of kids. Um, I thought that was really interesting and really it's more interactive, so it's, it's really engaging, and I feel like you learn a lot from that when you can see like artifacts and read the, and watch the videos there. It was really cool. Um, we toured um A U there. So we sat down and we heard a lot of it, a lot about it. It was like a little um presentation, and then we walked around their campus. We went to all their buildings that they went to. Um, we also had the lead conference, um, which was really, I feel like eye-opening for a lot of like my classmates and peers. Um, we, there were, we sat in a big room with a bunch of students, and we, um, there were presentations. Um, one of the people was, and we put in Sarah Wells. She was in the Olympics, and she earned a silver medal, and um, she gave a presentation about how she won a silver medal, but she, the way that she, her experiences, sorry, um, didn't really go as planned, her goals. She wanted to win a gold medal, and it was seconds or like half a second behind or something. And anyways, what I learned most from there was that your silver medals count too, and not, you're not always gonna meet your goals, and um so they really said this, they made like a point here too, that some doors, even though many adults around us wanna motivate us and make us think that all doors can be open for us, that some doors unfortunately will be closed, and that's fine, but you have to pick yourself back up and find other opportunities um that can be much better for you as well. Um, and we also went to different sessions that we could choose from. There was um a water presentation. We talked about the lack of fresh water and um like the economics, like um in Africa, they have a bunch of water sources there, but they don't have like the money to get that water and um distribute it. Um, there was one about um sexual harassment, which was, it was just an awareness about it and resources um and acknowledgement of the topic, making it feel like a safe space. Um, I went to a fundraising session as well, which um me and a, a bunch of people from other schools talked about different ways that their schools fundraise, which um I learned a lot more about with different ways we can fundraise here. Which is really fun too. There was one where you can um play staff versus students. You can earn money like that, you know, money for admission, and it was really fun. It sounded really fun. And I also went to one where um we talked about engaging and expanding your, in your social media, which I think is very relevant since we've been talking about technology. Um, they also talked about it there, which was interesting. And that is, so I don't go off on a long tangent, that is part of what we did in Washington, D C. I really enjoyed the trip. I thought that it was very eye-opening, and a bunch of the other students thought that too. We wanted, after that, um, we all met in one of the rooms, and we all kind of just threw everything out, things that we'd wanna bring here, like school spirit, and um really just like making the school a positive place so kids can be more excited to come here. Other than that, um, the first one we're ending. Um, we are talking about with the Laney College classes that we wanna sign up for as well for um the second semester. Um, my class is um wanting to do a Sweethearts dance, another dance we don't typically do in around February. Um, and there's been fundraising with the classes too. My class wants to do like a, of the kettle corn fundraiser again. I know the seniors are selling reeds. Um, they, I, from what I've heard, they're selling them at O G. It's going very well. And that is all I have.
Thank you.
Awesome. Nicole, very good.
I will say, I would love a student like school spirit, team, club, already talking to Savage Rock Junior basketball games, hack time stuff, to really start building that back room in a school store, so that's talk about that.
Okay.
Thank you very much. That was terrific. Okay, moving on to committee reports. Uh, start with policy. Kathy.
Covered um mostly old business and a hope of a new business that um we will be going over on the actions, and our next meeting is Monday, December fourth.
Seven fourth at three, three hundred o'clock. Okay, finance. Uh, uh, Chris was here with us on Zoom.
He's here.
Uh, bragging down. Is he here now?
He is here on Google Meet. I don't.
Go.
I'm sorry, what?
He just texted and asked me to talk about it.
Oh, thank you.
But I don't think there's much more to cover than what Levi went through on, on the audit reports. Because Levi touched base on the school nutrition financial report, which we discussed. Uh, Roxanne had sent a letter to the state with some of the intentions on where those funds will be spent. Um, but it's still a work in progress, and uh I think you're gonna take a couple months, right, Roxanne, and then get back to us with where we stand with that. And then the audit, we talked about the nine percent um carrying forward, and then um increasing the reserves for the remainder of that money, that outstanding money. I know that's all we talked about.
Yeah.
That's right, I'm sorry.
Okay, thanks. I appreciate that, Dylan. Okay, moving on to facilities. Danielle.
Uh, so we have an update on the walkway lights. Um, they, we are gonna have to cover that. So we have a price right now of forty-seven fifty. That does not include the lift to be able to get to the lights. Um, if we have to rent one, it's gonna be six hundred dollars, so the whole thing's gonna be roughly fifty-three hundred. Um, we are getting another, an updated estimate from Integrity to see how much it would be for them to do it. Um, so that is that, and then our fuel tank. Um, we don't have any oil getting out, and we have no water getting in currently. Our tank is due to arrive the end of December. Um, if we have to rent a tank, if like if we can't get it in the ground and we have to have like a.
Skid tank.
Yes, then that will be about fifteen hundred bucks, and then the tank, the new tank, and all of it to be put in, it will not be, that's everything done, but to have it all put in, it's eighty-two thousand seven hundred and thirty-five dollars. Um, our elevator inspection passed. Lots of bonus.
Yay.
Small wins, yes. And then the greenhouse that we have, um, we got the grant for that. Um, Miriam is working on another grant currently. Um, the site has been settled on, and it's by the silo. Um, the greenhouse is gonna be fifteen by thirty, and they're gonna try to get the crushed stone down before the end of this year, right? And that will be um eighteen by thirty seven. And that's all I got.
Thank you, Danielle. And lastly, negotiations go.
Uh, we've had three meetings. We've had some documents go back and forth. It's a uh slow and thoughtful process working through um one or more articles at a time, and we're in the process of it, and it seems to be going well, and both sides seem to be communicating effectively at this point. We'll have more for you next, next time.
And I, I would just like to add a, a note of personal appreciation for Bob, for your leadership in this process. Um, it's been a very amicable thoughtful process. I think that there's been a lot of good information exchanged on both sides. I think we've heard each other. Um, and I think it's, it's been a, it's been a good negotiations, and we'll bring it to conclusion pretty quickly. Thank you. Moving on. Uh, are there appointments, resignations, non? And thank you. Moving on. Uh, are there appointments, resignations, nominations, any?
Yes. Um, I, I have a resignation. Um, Tony Clark um, has resigned, as you all know. He has retired and is moving um, on with his life. Um, and we wish him the best. Um, Keith Jackson is actually transferring into Tony Clark's position. So Keith Jackson is one of our night custodians currently. Um, once we have another day custodian, custodian, um, you know, hired, um, Keith or a night custodian hired, I'm sorry. Keith will move into the daytime position. Um, and I have one appointment uh, for the boys' middle school uh, basketball team, and that is Delaney Arbor. That's it.
Did you make the action on any of that, Georgia?
No.
No. Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Okay, moving to the action item set. The first is approval of the foster check co-op agreement. Georgia, do you want to talk about that?
Um, yep. I mean, it all pretty much speaks for itself. I do have one edit though to it. Um, the, if you look um, on page one, um, under B, um, the, the, the copy that I gave you, there was a, a part of that missing. Um, and it should say at the very end of that, both the advisory board and the advisory board, school boards will need to approve the increase by a three-fourths affirmative vote. So um, basically what that means is the advisory board will be made up of the superintendents. And the advisory board, school boards will be made up of the, those uh, board members that are on the committee. Um, and as you remember, Chris Farmer graciously um, um, said he would be on this committee. Um, they, they have his information and we, we will be getting together. So basically, for anything to get approved, three out of the four schools would need to approve this. That's, that's really the only other thing. Um, most of it is just, I think, um, just edits to language. Um, but I think the, the real premise behind the changes with this is just to make it more, a, a more collaborative um, group, um, and so that everybody has a voice.
Question then to um, accept the agreement. Kayla, second? Okay, uh, Danielle, any questions, comments or discussion? All those in favor? Passed unanimously. Thank you very much. Revision to the student hearing handbook. Uh, Seth, do you wanna speak to that?
Yeah, um, it's just basically, we, it's, we're just, I wanna revise the senior privilege article, but it is a whole, it is part of the handbook. Um, I've been thinking about asking for this for a couple of years. Um, the cutoff was eighty-five. I've done a lot of research. Um, some schools have ninety, some schools have passing, some schools have academic uh, athletic eligibility. I think eighty, I talked to Georgia, I asked for seventy-six first, like that C range. And she said, well, how about we, you know, still keep an eighty? Really like for this cycle, it adds one student. And every year I have a couple of kids that like have like an eighty-one or eighty-two, I'm like, boy, like I think they've earned senior privileges. Um, and I just think it makes sense um to move it. And uh, you know, I think at some point, looking at more open campus, but yeah, they can go home for lunch. They can go home for a study hall. Here it's kind of when I had it, they always, we, we can't really line senior stuff up at the end of the day, so they have study halls maybe in the morning. Yeah, I've just been meaning to ask for it. Um, and it's just a nice thing is you're a senior, you know, um kind of little thing. And there's always one or two kids that have in that eighties and it'd be like, God, I feel bad not telling them they can have senior privilege because they work hard, um, they're conscientious. So I just think like this time, this cycle right here, we'll pick up one student that I think deserves it. We will have one, two, three, four, five, six. And then once they turn eighteen, they just start signing on anyways. And that's gonna start happening pretty quick.
Can I have a motion then to make this revision to the handbook, moving that uh, percentile from eighty-five to eighty?
So long.
Uh, seconds.
Second.
Okay. Uh, any questions or comments? All those in favor? Okay, thank you, Seth.
You're welcome.
Now, revision to the policy.
Can I just ask?
Because these are in clusters. I'm sorry.
One question. So I talked to Kim Dovier. We don't wanna reprint like a hundred handbooks. We're just gonna go with, this has been amended. We know it's been amended. I'll operate from my office with it. We'll reprint it next year. Is that fine?
Yes.
You can either make a note or a post on the website, because haven't we agreed we're gonna start posting a lot of this stuff just online and not doing a lot of printing anyway?
Yeah, we can, we'll, we'll do it. Maybe we'll, I will see about doing an update, but it's so minor that I think I can just run.
I suppose there's news announcements or something.
Yeah, okay. Like right now. I wanna make a phone.
The seniors are waiting for it, guys.
Yeah, there's one senior I told them and they were really happy. It was kind of happy about the.
Kathy, given some of these are in chunks, they're the same edits, I'm gonna give you, get to you and let you just kind of direct on, uh, which one did you wanna move first?
Okay, well, let's just do, they're all, this should be pretty quick. Um, E E A A dash R we tabled last, uh, month. And we just, all we did to do this was we included the language. Um, the form should be submitted, noted and quoted prior to the proposal unless approved by the superintendent or designated.
And that gives it flexibility because we have curves that come up like tonight, where there isn't a full week qualification.
And the other thing is we're adding this third page, where you completed after board approval. So uh, who's ever running the show, um, would complete this page after and submit it to uh, front office. So what's the, those are the only two changes and they were requested by.
So can I have a motion to approve these edits? Second, Joe, any questions or comments? Yes, Danielle.
I'll just, I'll just pass along my grammar nerd work here that you're. That the word notify is misspelled.
No, we already commented.
Well, it's not correct on here, so notify is N O T F, N O T I F Y, not, not the way it's spelled.
What's that? Where is that?
On the third sheet.
See, there's an infomercial for artificial intelligence.
Chat GPT.
You could do that.
Yeah. Yeah.
That would be the evaluator.
Exactly.
She'd be good.
Thank you, Karen.
It's a bit of content monitor.
Exactly.
I, I, that was the only one.
No, there's a couple of others, but I. Where's the first one? I'm gonna miss you when I don't do this anymore.
She, she's had a red pen.
Yeah.
Purple. Purple. All right, purple. And so, all of those in favor? Thank you for those revisions. All right, Kathy.
Now the next, one, two, three, four, five, the all those eight policies, these are all required policies. We have been asked by the state to include language. You can see it on AC, um, sexual orientation means a person's actual of a secret heterosexuality, bisexuality or homosexuality. These are, this is a new phrase that has been added to all of these policies. Otherwise, they're very difficult. To MSMA and they're all required. I think one of them is in a different place. Yeah, it's on page two on ACAB dash R, but it's on the first page of everything else. So, and these are required. You don't have much choice.
So we have a motion.
So it's AC, ACAB, ACAB dash R, ACAA and ACAA dash R.
Yes, Kayla, second.
Second.
Uh, any questions or comments? Yes, Danielle.
This one actually is a legitimate question. Several of these have within forty calendar or then in parentheses, it says it was business days, but we need to decide that as a board? Like for example.
Give me an example.
Um, on ACB dash R, page five of fifteen, page six of, five of thirteen, excuse me.
Let me, let me, can we find that first, Seth? Just give us a chance to find. Page five of ACAB dash R.
Correct.
That's one was the thing that's in the first page.
Yeah.
Where, okay, page thirteen? No, what?
Page five of thirteen, um, number ten.
Okay.
Near the bottom. And then it repeats itself several times in all of the documents that are coming up. But they say calendar or business. And did we decide on that or do we need to?
Uh, Georgia, do you remember?
No, we didn't. We did not talk about that.
Is there a bill going through though, that's gonna make that decision for us?
Georgia?
Did you hear that, Georgia?
Um, I, I don't know. I don't know the answer to that question right now.
I think there is, but I can't remember where I read that.
Would you be comfortable with passing these policies with the understanding that we will clarify this?
Yes.
People comfortable with that?
Yes.
Okay, so all those in favor?
Okay, then that's the last two. I think we can do together two there. The policies for volunteers, chaperones and um that, the back one, yeah. And um, there are two new paragraphs added that administration wanted added, right? Seth?
Mm-hmm.
You guys are the ones that wanted these.
Yeah, we just want chaperones and volunteers to be fingerprinted, not taken, right?
Finger printed.
It's fingerprinting, right? Yes, for chaperones and volunteers.
And the reason being, the rationale for that being that, that there's no way we can guarantee that a person serving in that capacity at the school would not have the opportunity to have a one-on-one contact with a student. And because of that, and there are no guarantees around that, we feel it's necessary for these folks to have that, bring the brain, that bar check. So that they cast the same test with everybody else who interacts with us.
And relatively simple, I've been told.
Yeah, it is very simple. So, could I have a motion to that a bit?
For both of these.
For both of them?
Yeah.
A joint, a second? Any questions or comments regarding that?
I'll just send along my edits.
I don't know, the watch.
It's a good thing though, you know, it really, you know.
So all those in favor? Okay, that concludes then our action item business for this evening. Our next meeting is on the twelfth of December. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
A little.
So move, everybody move. Second, everybody seconds, all in favor?